Followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes ma'am. Chair Seberg.
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens. Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Ball.
Here.
Mrs. Bressia.
Here.
Ms. Island.
Here.
Ms. Lynn.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you ma'am. Dr. Newman, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
No ma'am.
Thank you. Can I get a motion for approval of the public agenda?
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hollingsworth, second by Mrs. Brooks, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Well, we have a very exciting meeting for you tonight, full of lots of highlights and spotlights, and I'd like to ask Mrs. Radford to come up. There she is. For the superintendent's announcements and spotlights.
Thank you Chair Seberg, good evening other members of the board, and good evening to everyone that is here with us on tonight. As you said, we have a full night of spotlights, and I am very honored and pleased to share them with you on this evening. Had to put my camera down. Thank you all for being here with us tonight. We'd like to start off with our Virginia School Boards Association Northeastern Regional Student Art Contest winner, our first place winner, and that went to Hamden from Weems Elementary School. Is he here? Well, Hamden is being recognized for winning first place, and you can see here on the screen, at the Virginia School Boards Association's Northeastern Regional Student Art Contest. His silver scratch art self-portrait secured the top spot among elementary entries. Artwork from students across all levels across the state, from elementary, middle, and high school, represented their respective school divisions in this regional competition, and his artwork will be framed and displayed at the Virginia School Boards Association office in Charlottesville for the duration of the year. So we congratulate him on such a great honor. Like to give a shout out to his teacher, Amy Saylor, for working with our art students. Next, we had the privilege of witnessing some great artwork in the community through the Arbor Day program that the city hosts, and this year's theme was "A Tree for You and Me." And so we had several entries in that contest, but we had first place winners from one school. Round Elementary School brought a sweep this year, and the art teacher there is Molly Lane. So we're gonna ask Ms. Lane to come up to be here with her students, as I call their names. I believe each of them received a tree and a certificate at the event. So, as I stated, all of them are from Round Elementary, and we'll start off with kindergarten, Bria Everett. And Bria, if you can just stay there, and I'll get a picture of all of you at the same time. Our first grader is Emiliano Ramos Martinez. Our second grader is Evelyn Rains. From third grade, Rehan Alimi. I will note that Rehan was our grand prize winner for the day. And our fourth grader is Amelia Ward. Congratulations to all of our Arbor Day contest winners. They did amazing artwork. I was there, I witnessed it myself, and so we're very proud of each of you. Thank you so much for representing Manassas City Schools. All good. Congratulations and thank you. Okay. Next, we'd like to recognize our Division Art Show first place winners. The Division-wide Art Show was held April 26th at Osborne High School. The display of student artwork from every school across the division was simply amazing. The talent our students possess is truly unmatched. Tonight, we are here to recognize the first place winners from each school. So we'll begin with Hayden Elementary School Mia Vogel, second grader. From Round Elementary, third grader Allison Lovo Jimenez. From Dean Elementary School, third grader Aileen Velazquez Solis. From Baldwin Elementary School, third grader Jackson Cortana. From Weems Elementary, fourth grader Karis Zikri. Next, we have Mayfield Intermediate, sixth grader Braylon Miller. From Baldwin Intermediate School, Carmilla Ortiz, fifth grader. From Metz Middle School, eighth grader Camila Rivera Reyes. And from Osborne High School, ninth grader Derek Wong. I do know that the judging was very intense for this, the art show that night, so congratulations to all of you for your outstanding work. And I'd like to go back to our VSB A Northeastern Regional Student Art Contest winner. I believe that Hamden is here, and so we want him to come forward now so that we can recognize him for his artwork. And his teacher, Ms. Saylor, is here. Okay. Now, we'd like to announce that four girls representing Weems Elementary School, again under Ms. Hupman's leadership there, but under the direction of Wendy Dunlap, at the All Virginia Elementary Chorus that took place on Saturday, April 20th, at Spotwood High School in Rockingham County. So please join me in recognizing the following four students. Jadisia Guadalupe Lima Bravo. Sarah Assim Shenota. Stephanie Sabrian Sidios. And Maritza Juan Rodriguez. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you, good job ladies. And thank you all for your patience. We believe these are meaningful moments for families, and we'd like them to be able to take pictures, so, thank you. Okay, it's a busy time for fine arts during this season, and it's competition time for them, so we have a series of them tonight that we'd like to recognize. And we're gonna start off at Osborne High School and Metz Middle School, the orchestra program, under the direction of Latoya Lamaz, and she's here, and she will share some of the highlights from their season.
Good evening, it's a pleasure to be here. I, you know what, I forgot that I taught at Metz and Osborne. So, this was my first year at Metz, and I took the performance orchestra to perform at the Virginia State Assessment, and we performed a grade level of three. Last year, they went in grade level of one, and so we are advancing in the orchestra department at Metz and Osborne, and we received an excellent at Metz, so I'm very proud of those students. Osborne, these are my babies over here, this is my second year with them, and last year, the intermediate orchestra, we went in grade level of three. I should have prefaced this with the grade levels range from one through six, one being easiest, six being the most difficult. Last year, the intermediate orchestra at Osborne went in grade level three, and the chamber orchestra went in grade level four. This year, the intermediate orchestra went in grade level split of three and four, and the chamber orchestra went in grade level four-five, which to my knowledge, Osborne's chamber orchestra has not done. So, I would like to congratulate the intermediate orchestra from Osborne and the chamber orchestra from Osborne for their assessment progress this year. They've worked so hard, and they're a dedicated group of children, and I absolutely adore them. And we have a concert on Thursday if you want to come. It's gonna be fantastic.
And now, from our middle school choir, we have Ms. Anola Douglas, and she's gonna talk a little bit about their season.
Good evening. So, the first thing, we had a lot of things happen in the last couple months. We had all district chorus, which the students had to audition for, had seven students make that, with one alternate. I do have a few of them here. First up is Nicole Gomez. Lily O'Beere. Julie Reyes. Kamora Williams. Isabella Torres. Jude Lopez. And Javier Valenzuela. And our alternate was Angel Gutierrez. Yes, that's everybody for all districts. You want to keep going, or? Obviously, you want to do separate, that's why, you want to do separate? Okay. Alright, next up, oh! Next up is all-state chorus. I had one student make audition for, and make all-state chorus, which was held in Richmond in April, a couple weeks ago, and that was Jude Lopez. And then finally, we also do district assessment. I took all three of my choirs to district assessment, the Tenerife Choir, my Beginning Trouble Choir, and my Advanced Choir, and all three choirs received superior ratings from all four judges at assessment. You guys can come back up and take a picture. You can come back up and take a picture.
Okay, next we will have Osborne Choirs, under the direction of Shirley Glom.
Hi, I'm Shirley Glom, and this is my first year at Osborne High School, and it's been a treat. We've been trying to build community, that's been our motto for the whole year, and I just wanted to share a couple of things that we've been doing to spread joy in the community. This year, we celebrated our first recruitment night, which was a great success with our feeder schools, singing the National Anthem at our home football game. We've had successful fall, winter, winter fest, all-city pre-assessment, assessment, and spring concerts. We've done holiday gigs around Manassas City, including the tree lighting, the VRE Santa Train Ride, Manassas City Tour of Homes, and we did weekly performances at the mall every weekend in December. We've also had holiday in the halls at all of our feeder elementary and intermediate schools. This year, Center Stage was invited to perform at the Pentagon. We performed that recently last month. The choir department also received straight, superior ratings, both onstage and in-site reading, from all three judges in every category. They also did music that was level four-five, which was a little push for them, but they did great, and I'm really proud of them. Center Stage also just recently went to competition. They received first place in straight, superior ratings at their show choir competition in Williamsburg, Virginia. We had eighteen delegates make District Nine Honor Choir, which I think that they were already honored earlier. We also had four alternates that made District Nine Honor Choir. We had two alternates for Virginia All-State Honor Choir this year. We had one delegate make the Virginia VMEA Senior Honor Choir. And then, this year, we were lucky enough, the next level up is Southern ACDA Division Honor Choir, and we had two delegates, and we haven't actually mentioned them, but I would like to mention them today, Alex Maiko and Correll Maxine Deacy, if they can come up. So this is Southern Division ACDA, they performed in Kentucky, Louisville, earlier this year, and they had over, I think it was like something crazy, like 12,000 applicants, and only for, each choir had about 200 in each of the choirs performing. And they were picked from Maryland all the way down to Florida, they were competing for those spots. There were a lot of South Carolina kids, excellent, so, but overall, we are very proud of all of our choir program. I'm really proud of all of them, if they can just come up and grab a picture, and thank you.
Okay, Chair Seberg, we have a Division-wide Art Show first place winner that is here, and it's, he's from, I'm sorry, Weems Elementary School, Karis Zakri, or Zachary, Zachary? Fourth grade. Okay. Our next recognition is for Osborne High School Band, under the direction of Andrew Wassam, so he'll come forward now.
So I know, I know we have Thomas and Theodore down here, if they're, I think I saw Timothy. Any other band kids come on down to the front. So, and Hosway, yes, hard to miss with that hair, come on down buddy. You guys know me, I'm Andrew Wassam, I'm the band director at Osborne, I am not new, very not new. So this year, we had a great year all around. You guys have to stand up in the front while I talk. I won't make you do jazz hands like Ms. Glom, I promise. Dr. Newman has to, but that's a different. So we had a great, thank, we had a great fall season with the marching band. Before I go through all these accolades, I do want to emphasize that my philosophy with the kids, and they can tell you this, is that accolades and winning are secondary to their personal growth and their education, which is the goal. It just so happens that when you do your best, and you work as hard as you can work, they seem to coincide. So, this year, at their first competition of the season, which was Woodbridge Viking Invitational, they won second place in music, second place in percussion, second place in general effect, and second place overall in class. At the North Stafford High School Big Blue Marching Invitational, they won first place in music and second place overall in class. And I believe we missed first place by one point. One point. Theo says it was his fault. And then, at the Fall Marching Assessment, we came very close to an overall superior. We had two out of three music scores were superiors, with excellent scores in visuals, so an overall excellent, but very close and a very good effort on everybody involved. And then, the Symphonic Band at the VBODA Spring Concert Assessment achieved straight, superior ratings from all judges, with As and Bs in all categories. And the Concert Band, our entry-level ensemble, also earned superiors at the concert assessment, so superiors for both groups. We also had two students make, well, two students make all-district band, and then Hosway was an alternate, but Theodore Weiner over here waved to the people, made trumpet. And Caitlin Heverin, who couldn't be here tonight, also made a clarinet chair in the all-district band as well, District Nine. And both Theo and Caitlin qualified because of how high they placed in the group, they qualified to audition for All Virginia Band, which is especially impressive for Mr. Theodore here, as he is a freshman at Osborne. Great job. Great job, everybody. Okay, jazz hands, I lied.
Okay, before we move on, did I miss any students from the Arbor Day or Division-wide Art Show? Is there anyone else that was here for that? Okay. Alright, seems to be good. Alright, next we're moving on to Osborne High School Skills USA recognition. They had a competition recently for that, and I believe Mr. Black is here from Osborne High School, and he will share the results of that competition.
Good evening, Mass City School Board. If I can have all the Skills USA members come on forward. We had a great time down in Virginia Beach recently. I will say, this is by far the funniest group of students I ever had the privilege, because they're always laughing, they're always smiling. I will start first with Mr. Lenny Contreras, who competed in customer service, Virginia Beach. Lenny, wave. All right. Next, we had both Gabriella and Natalia Claros compete in the T-shirt competition for the state. Next, we had Danny Diaz, Yvonne Kumako, and hiding in the back, Jasmine Bowman, compete in crime scene investigation. And we had our state officers, the State Treasurer, Michelle Gonzalez. And our state president, Ms. Stephanie Garcia. She also competed in commercial photography and got second place. Next, we have Ms. Anaya Evans, who won first place in commercial photography. Last but not least, we have Ms. Brianna Castro, hiding in the back. She won first place for criminal justice in the state. Both Brianna and Anaya will be going on to compete in the national competition against the rest of the country. I would like to say thank you to our advisors, Officer Hummel for working with our crime scene team, Officer Mitrovic, and Officer Rodriguez for working with the criminal justice people, and Ms. Connors for helping out. Commercial photography.
Congratulations, Skills USA. Very awesome. They look all nice and professional. Love it. We do have an Arbor Day winner here. First place winner from Round Elementary, Allison Lovo Jimenez, third grade. Okay, we're still at Osborn High School. And now, we are pleased to do a spotlight, and you all can have a seat right for now. We're pleased to do a spotlight on the Avid program. And so, Mr. Matt Ball is here, and he's going to share some highlights from the program with us tonight.
Good evening, school board members. Hello, Manassas City family. Thank you all for your dedication and your time and your thinking and sharing your passion with all of our students. My name is Matt Ball, and I'm the Avid District Director and also a teacher at Osborn High School. And this year, we celebrate ten years of Avid in Manassas City Public Schools. And so, we want to share some of the celebrations, some of the successes that we've had through our Avid journey in Manassas City, specifically tonight within Osborn High School. So we're here to share that with you. Avid stands for Advancement Via Individual Determination. And over these past ten years, a lot has changed, not only in education, but in Manassas City as well. And so, by staying true to our why, by staying true to what we are in Avid, it's allowed our students to demonstrate their individual determination. And so, I brought with me tonight some of our wonderful Avid students, and so we're going to start off with one of our students sharing our why.
Hello, my name is Claudia Armino, and I'm currently a student of Avid. I'm a freshman. And our Avid mission is to close an opportunity gap by preparing all students for college and career readiness and success in global society.
And so, we do that, we close that opportunity gap for all of our students by providing students what they need. And we know that students need rigorous academic preparedness. We know that students need opportunity knowledge. We know that students need agency. And so, as educators within Manassas City, we insist on that rigor. We insist on breaking down barriers. And over the past ten years, we are proud of what we've done. We're proud of the barriers we've broken. We are proud of the work that we've aligned within Manassas City, and especially at Osborn High School, and we are proud of how we've advocated for our students.
So, what is Avid? So, Avid is, or basically what Avid does is, Avid establishes a community for people who want to go to college, people who are trying to do things in their careers later on. And this is by quality Tier One instruction, and also by making sure that people who have the skills to go to college in their careers get that, and they can make it to where they need to be.
Hi, I'm Carla Corales, and I'm in 10th grade. And you may ask, what are Avid students? What do they look like and what qualities they may have? To me, when I think of a typical Avid student, I think of someone that is driven, that is motivated, and that wants to break down barriers, not only in school, but in their personal lives. And they are passionate to be the difference in the school and to mark the difference everywhere they go, not only out of high school, but just in their daily lives. And they're resilient and college-bound, just to do more than what someone may think of them.
What is it that we do in an Avid class? We focus more on note-taking. We learn how to take notes, and we do Socratic seminars every Saturday to help us with our classes and to crush up. We also look up college and career researches, like for you to know what you want to do and where you want to go.
So, something specific to me that Avid helped me out with, focus note-taking. So, in a lot of classes, you don't really get to learn how to take notes. But in Avid, when they taught me how to take notes, it really helped me study. It helped me for college. My dual enrollment courses, I'm really doing well in because of my notes, and then the college visits as well. Without them, I would not have gone and saw colleges.
In Avid, we really focus on building strategies for college and career readiness, and see, a lot of these strategies, our students don't have the opportunities to learn in some of their other classes, because they focus on content. And so, within Avid, we focus on skills, skills that help our students be college and career-ready. And that becomes the culture of Avid. That becomes the focus within Avid, is building that college and career-ready environment for all of our students. And so, we'd like to share some of the successes that we've had over the past ten years by sharing some of the information from some of our current and some of our former students. And so, we put together a video for you.
Hi, my name is Yaretzi, and my Avid success story is being the first in my family to go and graduate from college.
Hi, my name is Leslie, and I am an Avid freshman. My Avid success story is learning how to share my ideas through Socratic seminar, and also hearing other people's ideas and interacting with them.
Hi, I'm Alexander Calvin. My Avid success story is that I am in a healthy environment that allows me to collaborate with my classmates and be successful.
Hi, everyone. My name is Helen, and I am an Osborn Avid graduate of 2020. And my Avid success story is largely defined by my pursuit of my Master of Arts in Teaching, which I will be graduating with from James Madison University this upcoming May 9. And I mention this accomplishment because it really would not have been possible if it wasn't for the skills that I've developed through Avid, skills that involves collaboration, time management skills, organization skills, and most importantly, the guidance and encouragement that I had throughout Avid provided me with a sense of empowerment. Navigating higher education as a Latinx student can come with its challenges, especially when you don't have the resources or tools available to you.
Hello, my name is Monica Alakanaharo. I'm an Osborn Avid graduate of 2019. My Avid success story started with me getting accepted into Virginia Commonwealth University, where I then ended up graduating as a first-generation student in only three years without any student loan debt. I owe that all to Avid, as throughout high school, they pushed me to take AP and dual enrollment classes, which ultimately shaved off a whole year for my college education. Not only that, but they provided me with a financial education on how to afford going to college, such as the types of loans, grants, and scholarships that I could apply for. I now hold a Bachelor of Science in Mass Communications with a concentration in digital journalism. I'm working here in Richmond as an editor for a nonprofit organization called Virginia Housing, where we work to get affordable housing statewide. Thank you, Avid, for all that you've done, for providing me with the resources and financial education to achieve what my family and I thought was once only a pipe dream.
Hi, I'm Andrew Wint, and my Avid success story is incorporating more reading and writing into a CTE classroom to improve academic success of our students.
My Avid success story is taking students to their first university college tour and seeing them step onto campus and seeing how excited they are.
Hi, my name is Jasmine, and my Avid success story is becoming less overwhelmed with my future.
Hi, I'm Michael, and my Avid success story is I have been given determination to continue having As and Bs in my grades.
Hi, I'm Carla, and my Avid success story is that's helped me balance down with school life, but also student life and my work life.
Hi, my name is William, and my Avid success story is tutorials helping me with my rigorous classes.
Hi, my name is Janet, and my Avid success story is teachers not letting me give up when I had no motivation.
Avid really provided me with so many opportunities to pursue higher ed, to achieve my dreams, and it really showed me that achieving my dreams is possible and my goals are attainable. And I am so excited to be able to give back to my community through education, through being a teacher, and be able to have that same impact on my students the way that my teachers in Avid had on me.
All right, so I'm Joseph Chika, I forgot to say my name earlier, I'm 12th grade. But my Avid success story was going from not knowing where I was going to be living, to winning the Presidential Scholarship at Virginia Tech. And without Avid, I couldn't have done this, without the rigor that Mr. Ball put me in. It was annoying at the time. But without this program, I wouldn't have been here, so I'm very appreciative of it.
And so, we want to share a couple of other successes across the past ten years. Waiting on this slideshow, there we go. And so, here's just some information over the past ten years that we're going to share with you all.
So, we have over a thousand total Avid students, and most of them do get accepted into a four-year college. And we have over ninety percent of attendance rate, meaning like they're going to their classes, and if they're missing classes, it's mostly because maybe they're sick or something comes up. But Avid students are mostly exceeding in the rate of attendance and attending their classes.
So, Avid has around fifteen Presidential Scholarships, and over a million dollars in scholarships. So compared to the rest of school, we have a lot more applications for scholarships and we win more.
We have about ninety-seven percent of SOL pass rate and about seventy-five educators Avid trained.
And I think a part of the testament to the success that we've had is that number of educators that have been trained over the past ten years, over seventy-five of them. And we still have twenty, twenty-five educators still in Osborn that have been trained over the past ten years, and we look to continue doing that. I looked up the number the other day, we have three hundred and twelve Avid alumni out there throughout the country that have gone through Osborn Avid and are now pursuing their career dreams.
So in Avid, you're required to complete community service hours, and there are a variety of ways that you can complete these hours. And some of them are provided by that school, whether that be keeping Manassas clean, which is cleaning up the road that we adopted. And I know for me, I've done a lot in my place of worship, there's daycare. And last year, I had the opportunity to go over to Met's, where there would be non-English-speaking parents meeting, and then they would bring their kids, and you would either like tutor them with their homework, help them with other things, or just talk to them. And I think doing community service, not only with Avid, but it's helped me with my personal life and connecting with our community and learning how to help out.
Well, we have a tremendous amount of success over the past ten years. As I always like to say, we're not done yet. I'm excited to look forward, and these are a couple of the goals that we have going forward, increasing the number of Avid-trained educators throughout Manassas City, and implementing the strategies that we know to be successful in all of our content classes. And while our students, and Joe and all these students are enrolled in AP and dual enrollment classes, sometimes against their will, they are being successful in those classes, and we look to continue to increase the success rate of students within those classes. And then, we also look to increase our enrollment of male students within Avid. And so, we have a lot to celebrate over the past ten years, and we are very proud of where we've been. And these are some of the things that we're looking forward to in the next ten years of Avid and Manassas City Public Schools. Thank you for allowing us to share some of our successes with you, and we look forward to continuing on the next ten years of our Avid journey. Thank you very much, and thank you.
I will pause now. We do still have students here that may need to leave, so this is a good time to make your exit if you need to do so. Sometimes they wonder, so. Thank you all and congratulations. What an awesome presentation by Avid. Was it not exciting? We need to tell everybody about that. So many success stories, and it's just phenomenal. So, thank you to Mr. Ball for that. We need to tell everybody about that. So many success stories, and it's just phenomenal, so thank you to Mr. Ball for that. Okay. Each year, the Teacher Education and Mentor or Team Program recognizes educators who have seen great success as a beginning teacher, a newly hired experienced teacher, or mentor teachers. This year, school staff nominated more than 60 educators for their dedication to supporting new teachers. The professional learning team, central office representatives, and building administrators recently surprised each of the winners at their respective schools. So tonight, I think I have Katie Keegan, Director of Professional Learning, here, and she's going to join me up front as we recognize newly hired experienced teacher of the year, Elizabeth Fortine, Weems Elementary School. Ms. Fortine has created, and this is the voice of her nominator, so if you hear me use first person, that is where that's coming from. Ms. Fortine has created instructional units and lessons in alignment with the Virginia standards of learning. She has demonstrated differentiated instruction to assist students with various physical and emotional needs while considering the differences between the Weems student population. She has done this by varying the length of instructional and creating physical education, stationed activities, while focusing on students' abilities and needs. Ms. Fortine continues to build a strong rapport with all of her students, learning all of her students' names almost immediately as a new teacher in the building. She has joined the Girls on the Run After School Program as a coach, and engages with her students outside of the classroom, supporting the girls in their efforts to improve themselves and their overall physical fitness. Ms. Fortine also offered an after-school program for colleagues to engage in an hour of exercise once a week that provided lively music, friendship, and fun. She even organized a successful community outreach program that raised funds for new playground equipment benefiting the entire school community. Throughout the school year, Ms. Fortine has exceeded daily expectations and taken on projects serving the students and the community. Congratulations to her. Yes, congratulations. Our Beginning Teacher of the Year couldn't be here tonight, Ms. Rodriguez from Met's Middle School, and then also our Team Mentor of the Year, Ms. Shannon Hilton from Osborne High School. So we congratulate them in their absence tonight. Now we are ready to recognize our retirees. But are we ready? I don't know. Are we really ready? I don't know. Yes, they are. I get it. Many of them have waited a long time for this moment, so we want to honor them tonight. I want to honor them tonight, and just to make sure I'm not missing anyone, we're going to read all the names. But I just want to say congratulations to them. Oftentimes, making the decision to retire is not an easy one, and many of them, I would say, we span from four years of service here to 42 years of service. And so we just congratulate them. We look forward to the great, wonderful things many of them will do. I hope some of them will return to us in other capacities, because we always like to see them come back and put their hands, but after they rest a little bit. We'll give them that. But we definitely appreciate their presence over the years. They are from all different aspects of the division, and we honor them on tonight. So as I call your names, please come forward. With 39 years of service from Transportation, Patricia Andrews. With 17 years of service from Weems Elementary School, Elinda Cruz, kindergarten teacher. I'm sorry, does that mean 18? Is this in parentheses? It's 18? Is rounded up? Okay, I'm sorry. 18 years. We'll give 18 years. Okay. From Weems Elementary, we have custodian, Lilia Talepia, 22 years of service. From Jenny Dean Elementary, library media specialist with 24 years, Rosemary Davis. Next, we have with 33 years as an instructional assistant in special education, Faith Stuart Stark from Dean Elementary. There she is. From Baldwin Elementary with six years, special education teacher, Robin Pope. From Round Elementary, 17 years, custodial shift supervisor, Dahlia Rivas de Ruiz. From Round Elementary with 17 years of service, instructional assistant in kindergarten, Charlene Carroll. From Round Elementary, 17 years of service, instructional assistant kindergarten, Nancy Bamford. From Osborne High School with 42 years of service, health and PE teacher, Thomas Howell. Baldwin Elementary School, I'm sorry, Baldwin Intermediate School, six years of service, school counselor, Lori White. From Mayfield Intermediate, 11 years of service, fifth-grade teacher, Kathleen Stoll. Osborne High School, four years of service, social studies teacher, Wendell Johnson. Weems Elementary, 35 years of service in the VPI program at Weems, Diana Staten. With 21 years of service, Baldwin Elementary, first-grade teacher, Marie Herring. From Weems Elementary with 34 years of service, kindergarten teacher, Veronica Campbell. From Osborne High School, 20 years of service, science teacher, Patricia DeSantis. From Osborne High School, 22 years of service, custodian, Ada Castenails, Castellanos. From Osborne High School, 13 years of service, science teacher, Harold Boone. And that's Ms. Castellanos, right? Yes, okay. From Mayfield Intermediate, 10 years of service, fifth-grade teacher, Jody Heffy? Heffley, Heffley. From Hayden Elementary, 27 years of service, first-grade teacher, Jeffrey Osborne. From Baldwin Elementary, 22 years of service, IA in special education, Yetta Hebert? Heyber? Heybear? Heybear. Heybear. Alright, thank you. From Osborne High School, 18 years of service, ESOL teacher, Patrick Riley. From Weems Elementary, 10 years of service, instructional facilitator, Kimberly Ainsworth. With five years of service at Met's Middle School, English teacher, Kathy Serber. With 30 years of service from Osborne High School, special education teacher, Scott Chenoweth. With 23 years of service in transportation as a school bus attendant, we have Blanca Melgar. From Dean Elementary with 19 years of service, instructional assistant in kindergarten, Maria Perez. And from Dean Elementary with 13 years of service, kindergarten teacher, Donna West. And congratulations to all of our retirees tonight. We wish you all well. Yes, yes, yes. Thank you for a job well done. Thank you to all the family members that came to support our retirees tonight as well. Thank you for being here. Congratulations, everybody. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. For the last two years, we have recognized substitutes through the RISE program. Principals and substitute coordinators were asked to identify a substitute for the outstanding job they do at their work site. I'll pause for a moment. Chair Seberg, we have from Baldwin Intermediate School for the Division Art Show First Place Winner, Camilla Ortiz, fifth grader. For the last two years, we have recognized substitutes through the RISE program. Principals and substitute coordinators were asked to identify a substitute for the outstanding job they do at their work site. Substitutes are highly regarded at Manassas City Public Schools. Why? Because they help us maintain consistency in the classroom by going through detailed orientation and training. Our categories of subs are as follows: teacher, instructional assistant, clerical, custodian, cafeteria, bus driver, bus aide, and registered nurse. So I'll do a plug-in right now. For anyone that's interested in becoming a substitute, contact Human Resources and we will hook you up, alright? So thank you for that. So tonight, we are pleased to recognize the individuals that each school selected for this recognition, and we will begin with Osborne High School, Reggie Moore. From Met's Middle School, Maria Hernandez. From Baldwin Intermediate, Vanessa Hawkins. Round Elementary, Sierra Tucker. From Hayden Elementary, Cynthia Klein. Baldwin Elementary, Madeline Sadler. Weems Elementary, Ivy Rice. Mayfield Intermediate, Sharla Thomas. Dean Elementary, Maria Martinez. And from the custodial department, Marvin Reyes. As I stated, this is not just signing up and just going in a classroom and not knowing what to do. Our Human Resources Department works really hard to do a great orientation program so that they are prepared and our students feel like their teachers are with them, or whatever capacity our substitutes work in. So we thank you all so much for giving of your time to come into Manassas City Public Schools and be as supportive to our student population, our student families, as you have, and we appreciate everything that you've done. Thank you so much. Alright, thank you all. Thank you so much. And now, Chair, I will turn it over to the board for a special presentation regarding our student representatives.
Alright, Ms. Bland and Ms. Island, may you please come up front? From the Board, we want to thank you for your dedication and support, not only to us around this dais, but also to your fellow students, not just at Osborne High School, but all the students throughout Manassas City Public Schools. You have really contributed quite, quite a lot to our conversations, and we value your input, and we want to thank you from the bottom of our heart for all that you have done. Ms. Island, you are graduating. You are going on to the next chapter of your life, and from what you told me earlier, you're pretty sure you've decided to go to GMU, and we
Okay, that concludes Superintendent Spotlight's for tonight. Thank you so much for your attention, and congratulations to all our honorees on this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Radford. That was a great time to celebrate, all of you out there. I did want to acknowledge Manassas Education Association members in the audience. We have Virginia Higginbotham and Tammy Potts. I think I saw Brandon Fincham, but they're Okay. Next up on our agenda is Board Committee Reports, and we have a few tonight. I'll go first to Mr. Hollingsworth, who chairs the Academics Committee.
Thank you, Chair. The Academic Committee met on the tenth of May. We moved one slot from the three-year-old pre-K to the fourth-grade pre-K, four-year-old pre-K, to help support our demand. Also, we did some minor corrections or adjustments to the Code of Conduct, which is on our website for your purview. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. For the Policy Committee, Mrs. Spall will be reporting.
Hi, I'm reporting for Vice Chair Stevens, who couldn't be here tonight. The Policy Committee met on May seventh to discuss sixty-three policies. They were updates and revisions from the V S B A and one M C P S policy. Seventeen were reviewed but not revised. Eight policies M C P S does not have due to our size generally. The other policies were recommended for update due to updates on cross-references, legal references, or update language within the policy. Due to time constraints, the meeting was tabled, and the Policy Committee will reconvene to continue the discussion. Four policies were deleted by the V S B A. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Spall. Personnel Committee chaired by Mrs. Christina Brooks.
Thank you, Chair. The Personnel Committee meeting was on May seventh. We further discussed the School Board Member Handbook and Orientation, as well as protocol for, you know, for school board members and possible remedies for breaching said protocol. We also discussed possible agenda items for our upcoming School Board Retreat, including the handbook orientation items for all the board to consider of the proposals that we have.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is Citizens' Comments. At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about services, policies, and affairs of the City of Manassas Public Schools. Because we have an agenda we need to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time you have taken to be here. We treat citizens' comments as a public hearing, and we do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. Please be respectful when presenting your comments. And first up, I have Jamie Brow.
Good evening.
Talk really close.
Good evening.
Yes.
Thank you. It is nice to be here. Dr. Newman probably understands why I'm here this evening. I did have a conversation with him on the phone yesterday regarding an incident that took place at Metz Middle School on Friday, May tenth. I will try to maintain my composure. I found out Sunday, May twelfth. My student at Metz was assaulted by another student. I received no notification from three administrators at the school. I was not notified that this had taken place. I was not notified until the morning of May twelfth, when my student finally felt comfortable enough to come to me to tell me that it happened. I sat down and spoke with Mr. Morris yesterday morning in his office, and I was told that the student who did this, it was pointed out that he's an athlete. That was followed up with an anecdote about a previous student he had while he was working in education, who also was an athlete who did something in middle school, which prevented them from getting a scholarship in college. That is not my concern. I was also told by Mr. Morris that had my child been a female student, the situation would have been handled differently and additional steps would have been taken. I was disgusted to have a principal who is, who told me, my own child's principal, did not know that I was not notified that the incident took place. This is a major discretion on the part of the school, indiscretion on the part of the school, excuse me. I am asking the School Board to ensure, Dr. Newman told me, he has assured me that it will be addressed. It needs, we need to ensure that there is no double standard. Assault is assault regardless of the gender of the person who is committing it or who is receiving it, on the receiving end of it. I do appreciate, Dr. Newman, that you took time to call me yesterday. I know that, I'm sure you're busy during the day, so I appreciate that. I did just want to make sure that the entire School Board is aware that this incident took place. It does concern me because I send my son off on the bus to school every day, assuming that the administrators in his school are keeping him safe and making sure he is in a comfortable environment, and that was taken from him. So I appreciate you listening. Thank you very much.
Hello, School Board and Superintendent. My name is Sophia. I've already spoken, but I wanted to take this opportunity to speak again regarding the changes to IMS and IH. I'm a seventh grader at Metz, and I'm currently enrolled in both of those programs at Metz. Decoupling both of these programs would not be beneficial in the long term. Decoupling IMS means that you can take any level of math on the program. Although this may sound wonderful, it means that the students who choose to take algebra will have to slow down so that the people taking regular math can properly integrate their math into science. This means that the program will be forced to lose some of its rigor, and though that's not the intention, it will be the outcome. It's the same concept for honors in regular English. An alternate solution would be to make an advanced science, civics, and geography class instead of tampering with IMS and IH. The research class is another change. Currently, we have a research class for IH and another for IMS. With the changes being made, there will be an interdisciplinary research class. This means that students who prefer the science side of research will have to do the humanity side of research as well, and vice versa. This would likely make the class not enjoyable for IMS and IH students. I've made an online petition that details what's happening to IMS and collected seventy-five signatures. This just goes to show that lots of people care about this program and don't want the changes to happen. I also know that we don't have a G T resource teacher at Metz or a finished curriculum, and I think it'd be smart to see the changes in curriculum before implementing all the changes. I also know that we have, last year, we had a one-hundred percent pass rate for algebra and geometry on the SOLs, and we had one student miss the, miss the pass by ten points for science. So this program is very successful. Metz in itself only has a thirty-nine percent pass rate, and that includes all of the IMS students. Thank you for your time.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Mighty Weitzel. Esta noche vengo con bastante preocupación por los cambios que están planeando el programa de IMS y IH. Como madre de dos niños, una niña en séptimo grado en Metz y un varón en decimodegrado en Osborne. If you weren't able to understand me, please don't speak on my behalf or my community. Tonight, I ask the School Board to pause and reconsider the changes being made to the IMS and IH program. As previously stated on March twenty-first by Mrs. Hensy, an experienced teacher in this program, also concerns raised by students currently in the program and parents, I'm asking to do the right thing and pause the changes. For those at home listening, please note that the administration is moving forward with the decoupling of the program, or simply stated, changing the program requirements. To date, the administration does not have a curriculum, nor they have filled the position needed to pull out or push in the one-hundred-plus students in Metz and the G T program. Finally, I ask to honor our teachers who are, who have been expressing their concerns in are at risk of, and we are at risk of losing talented teachers who are not aligned to the program changes. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes our Citizens' Comments. Can I get a motion for the Consent Agenda, please?
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Spall, second by Mrs. Brooks. That the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six-zero. Next up on our discussion agenda, we have Student Representatives for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and Mrs. Williams will introduce the Student Representatives.
So every year, we solicit for applications for two student representatives, as you see back here, and this year, we had an amazing turnout. We had so, we had, we had a lot of applications. Not only did we have several applications, but they were all extremely well-qualified, and it was very difficult to choose. But we did have a closed session, and we, as a board, chose the two future, future student representatives for the twenty-two, twenty-five school year, and I would like to announce, we will ask Ms. Ashley Bland to join us again for next year. We're excited that she has really worked hard this year. She, and we're looking forward to her continued work on her outreach to students in hopes to provide solutions for issues expressed by her fellow students. I'd also like to announce a rising junior, Amelia Breeden. I believe I see her in the audience, and I do. Welcome. Come up here and say hi if you feel comfortable. You might Ms. Breeden, we're excited to work with you. Your diligent work throughout the school as a journalist for Osborne High School, for the newspaper, for the Talon will be beneficial
Moving along to our Action Agenda, the School Board of the City of Manassas needs to approve the student fees and charges, for food service fees and charges, building use fees, and fee waiver guidelines, as presented at an earlier School Board meeting. Dr. Casada, would you like to speak to a change on the document?
Sure. There's just a clarification on the page regarding the food services fees, just to make it clear. No change to actual fees, but there's a footnote that makes it clear about adults paying à la carte prices for the food. So that clarification's been made in a footnote. Nothing else changed from when you saw it before.
Great.
Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the twenty-two, twenty-five student fees and charges, food service fees and charges, building use fees, and fee waiver guidelines as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Spall, second by Mrs. Brooks. That the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the twenty-two, twenty-five student fees and charges, food service fees and charges, building use fees, and fee waiver guidelines as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six-zero. Moving right along to Board Members' comments, and I'll first call on our departing student representative, Ms. Alicia Island.
Thank you. I wanted to say congrats to all of our spotlights tonight for all of their hard work and dedication. This year, a lot was achieved, whether it be in competitions, art shows, singing, teaching, working, or performing, and I'm so glad our community was able to excel with all of these impressive feats. Along with that, I'd like to say good luck to all of our retirees tonight. We will miss you dearly. I personally knew Miss Harring and Coach Howell, so I will miss them so much. And then, with this being my last year as a student rep, I couldn't be happier knowing that when I watch these meetings while in college, I'll be able to see both Amelia and Ashley working together. They truly are amazing, and I cannot wait to see what they will achieve. This opportunity is truly one of a kind, and I would like to thank the School Board and Superintendent Newman for all of their words of encouragement and amazing guidance. It's been a wonderful and educational two years, and I'm so proud I was able to represent OHS and M C P S schools. Thank you and have a nice evening.
Thank you. Ms. Bland.
Good evening. Congratulations to all our winners tonight. What a great achievement. I would also like to extend my regards to all the many teachers and staff retiring this year, especially Osborne's Mr. Howell and Weems', Mrs. Staton and Mrs. Ainsworth. I've known Mrs. Staton and Mrs. Ainsworth since I was in elementary school, and it's really sad to see them go. You will all be very missed. Tonight, I want to thank everybody who supported me for reapplying for this student representative position. This position has been, this position has opened so many doors, and I am so grateful to be here today, reappointed as the new senior representative. and I am so grateful to be here today, reappointed as the new senior representative. And also, huge thanks to all the teachers who wrote recommendations for me over spring break. Um, it's very much appreciated. I would also like to pay a tribute to my fellow representative, Alicia. I wish her the best at George Mason, and I thank her for teaching me all the ropes. Now, it's my time to pass the baton and teach our new junior representative, Amelia Breeden. This has been a great school year. I want to thank all of the student, or all the school board members for all the support. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Mrs. Brooks.
Thank you, Chair. I also want to say congratulations to all the spotlights. It's so great to hear all of the great things that are happening in our schools, but know that we will continue to keep our pulse on all the things that are happening to keep, you know, keep that great momentum going. Uh, we're coming into the home stretch of this academic school year. Uh, keep the course, the goals in sight, finish strong. Thank you.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to echo those sentiments. Um, congratulations to everyone recognized tonight. Uh, big shout-out to all the retirees. We appreciate your dedication and your commitment to service. Uh, thank you.
Mrs. Spall.
Yes, I can't believe it's the last, uh, meeting of the year, and I also want to appreciate all of the superintendent's, um, announcement and spotlight winners, especially the Avid program was very inspiring. Um, and always the retirees, uh, we can't thank them enough for their dedication to our schools and our students. I do have a couple prepared statements, um, that I'd like to go over, um, just because a couple things have been buzzing around in the community. Um, number one, I'd like to say that some people have been asking why school board wants to keep an old building so badly, um, when they question whatever's happening between school board and the city council as it relates to Old Dean El- um, Elementary. In light of the city council vote on our SUP last evening, I would like to take a moment to be transparent with our community that I'm much more concerned with what the city plans to do with the land once Old Dean is demolished than I am about keeping Old Dean itself. So, as people try to understand the school board's desire to keep Old Dean property as an option for future planning for the needs of our students, one might reframe the question as to what city council plans to do with an empty police station or even recently demolished Old Town Inn. The situation between school board and city council as it relates to Dean school property involves complex considerations about the use of public buildings and land. The considerations require careful planning and negotiation between different parties, like the school board and the city council. The school board's interest in retaining the Old Dean building could be for potential future educational needs, while the city council may have different plans for land use post demolition, demolition. The refusal to allow the school board to purchase property to use for central office and disagreements over the appraisal of the old police department repairs have led to a situation where the school board needs to take time to determine the best use of this school property. The issues are part of a broader discussion about land use, historical preservation, and community development. The school board's approach to conducting a review of options at Dean is a move to ensure that any decisions made are in the best interest of the community and the future of education in this city. Such assessments can take time but are crucial for making informed decisions that align with the community's needs and values. As an elected body, we are responsible directly to the citizens, and this board takes that responsibility seriously. I'd also like to address, um, with respect to a higher-order thinking skills, which is the ability to think abstractly and make connections between concepts, which is what integrated math and science and integrated humanities humanities is at Manassas City Public Schools. There's much to be commended about our program, which is unique in comparison to the offerings in any other of our neighboring jurisdictions. The skills necessary in our MCPS IMS classes, which include the ability to think abstractly and make connections between concepts, are indeed crucial for deep learning and understanding. What has been added is an analytical research component to our offering, and this is a welcome addition. The emphasis on analysis, synthesis, and evaluation in our IMS program not only sets it apart from other offerings in neighboring jurisdictions, but also prepares students for complex problem-solving and innovative thinking, which are essential in today's world. It is commendable that the IMS program is not only perfecting these offerings, but also expanding them to more students, ensuring that students are well-equipped for future challenges. To all staff who are working on this expansion, keep up the excellent work, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Spall. Ms. Bresja.
Thank you. I want to, uh, say to Ms. Spall, I do appreciate you for tackling the tough topics, uh, today, and I also am going to be addressing some tough topics, but first, I want to extend, of course, my congratulations to all of our, uh, highlights that we had spotlighted today, and to our new coming, uh, school board representative, and my best wishes to Ms. Island, our outgoing school board representative. You really made an impact, Ms. Island. I can't even see you over here on the side of the horseshoe, but, you know, your, your, um, contributions have been extremely valuable, and you really will be missed. And if you are eighteen and you keep your residency here in Manassas City and you are a registered voter, you can run for school board for real. Just keep that in mind. Anyway, um, the, uh, so, now to pivot to the more serious topics, I will also offer my own personal thoughts on Jenny Dean, and I want to express my own personal disappointment in the city council's vote last night regarding the construction of New Dean Elementary. Last night, the city council voted on the special use permit for construction of New Dean, and although they did approve this special use permit, they also voted to include alongside, alongside it a particular set of conditions for this existing building. It is their selection of these particular conditions that I fear has the potential to jeopardize the on-time and on-budget delivery of this project. As many know, the school board and the city council had been negotiating the use of the Jenny Dean site and the associated permit conditions. Last night, however, the council decided to discard these efforts and decided to adopt a different set of conditions that had not been previously discussed between these two bodies. One of their adopted conditions stipulates that, quote, "The school board will not undertake any ma- undertake any major capital improvements to the building, this building, including but not limited to the replacement of the roof or HVAC system that would extend the useful life of this building right here that we're sitting in right now." Now, leaving aside for a moment whether the city is legally able to impose such a condition on the school board, which is an equal, independent, and separately incorporated government body, leaving that completely to the side, to me, this condition creates an unacceptable risk regarding the operation of a safe and healthy school building. If the heat breaks down on a cold day in January, we need to retain the authority to fix it in a timely manner. Repairs to the roof are ongoing as we speak. Does the council purport that we stop this? Now, I'm sure the council will say that this is not their intention, that they do not mean to stop us from making repairs to critical systems, to a building full of children, but whatever their intention, what is written here creates what is, to me, an unacceptable risk that any needed repairs would take months of permitting to resolve. There are six hundred and fifty Manassas City children who continue, who will continue to attend school in this building for at least two years or until the new building is completed, and I personally do not feel comfortable risking putting them in an unsafe environment. What the council did last night was, in my personal opinion, unnecessarily aggressive and creates unacceptable risks and complications. While the school board will be meeting on this in the coming days to decide our way forward as a body, once again, I'm speaking just for myself, if it ends up that this project is delayed, make no mistake. It was the city council's choice to do so. I hope ultimately that cooler heads prevail and that a solution can be found in the coming weeks. Now, I do have a second topic. I do want to briefly address IMS and IH, which is the ongoing conversation about how we are going to be structuring our advanced programming at Metz Middle School. For me personally, even though I do agree that we have an issue here, we have an issue with our admissions process, how you fix a problem is important, and to me, I am just not there in terms of being able to support the proposed changes. I have too many questions regarding the curriculum, the research class, master scheduling, and the implementation, and the very aggressive timeline that's been presented. So, I did have the pleasure of attending the GTAC meeting on April twenty-fifth. Uh, the presentation regarding IMS and IH at that GTAC meeting was very detailed, was, uh, a much richer presentation of the proposed changes than what has, uh, been presented here in front of the board. I do wish that we had had that opportunity to see that version of the presentation instead of what we did get presented with at, I believe, the end of February. We do have the authority as a board to pause this pro, to pause these changes, to gather more information. I did do my own research into how other systems have handled this. The Seattle Public Schools had a similar issue where they were looking at restructuring their admission criteria to their gifted and talent, to their high-level programming, and it took them five years from the administration's first presentation until implementation. And five years is too long. That is a much bigger system and in a very different state. But pause is not the same as stop, and I do think that a pause would not be unwarranted here. But, thank you. That's all for me.
Thank you, Mrs. Bresja. Mrs. Williams.
Well, one of the challenges about going last is, um, people have said a lot of things already. Um, but I do have to, you can tell it's the end of the year. We have so many spotlights throughout the entire, entire year, but the end, we tend to have a lot, and so, um, it just makes my heart feel full when I see so much going on, so much success. So, uh, I want to say congratulations to everyone. Uh, say congratulations to all the retirees. The dedication each and every retiree has to our students is just commendable. I concur with my, my fellow school board members in reference to the city council's, uh, vote last night. I am, I anticipate that, um, the efforts that we have all put into getting to this point, a lot of negotiations. We made a lot of changes already throughout, throughout this process, and I anticipate that the city council and the school board will collaboratively refine this condition, um, that has been imposed upon us. And, um, I'm looking forward to our continued partnership with, with, uh, city council as we work towards this goal. And, um, my hope is, is that, is that we are able to, to, uh, come to an agreement so we can, we can move forward, and there is, there are no delays, uh, to, uh, building our new Jenny Dean. It's imperative we do that. It's also, I, I'd like to express one more thing, which is, anybody who's listening, education's changed, and I've said this before, it's changed. It, we're not crammed into a classroom anymore with twenty-five to thirty-two kids. We need space. Robotics takes space. Uh, project, project lead-the-way-type programs take space. Um, ro, I just say robotics already. It takes a lot of space. Um, and we have an opportunity here that perhaps we could use some of the space, and it would definitely improve upon our instructional value to our students, not just our students, but our families, not just our families, but our community as a whole. And, um, I, I find it quite interesting that city council doesn't find that same value as we do. Um, so, but I hope that we can work together and, and get this taken care of quickly. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. I wanted to say, when we walked into the building tonight, out in the hallway were portfolios displayed by students of the career strategies class at Osborne High School. It's their end-of-the-year projects, and they feature where they worked at an internship or an externship and what they received out of it, where they're going to be in five years and where they're going to be in ten years. Uh, but just outstanding work by these students and their teachers. Ms. Chrissy Blasis was here tonight representing, um, her students. Um, also, Mr. Godwin, is he, he's still here? Yep, he was here too. Um, so, I really appreciate seeing that, and I wish more of our community could see that, just to see these awesome things that our students are doing. So, thank you for that. Also, with the Avid presentation, ten years of Avid, what fantastic stats. And I, I love that program, and I love seeing what they're doing and what these kids are doing and how they're set up for success for college, career, and beyond. Um, and to Ms. Island, it's so great to see you being proud of who you are, the high school that you're graduating from, and where you're going to go in the city that you were raised in. So, thank you very much for your kind comments. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Oh, oh.
Chair, I move that the city of, uh, the school board of the city of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by section two dot two dash three seven one-one, paragraph A, part A, paragraph two of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended for the following purposes. Two dot two dash three seven one-one, part A, paragraph two, discussion of student matter, STUE twenty-three twenty-four dash forty, and two dot two dash three seven one-one, paragraph A, part A, paragraph one of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended for the following purposes, discussion of personnel matter, P E R S twenty-three twenty-four dash oh five oh five.
I have a motion by Mrs. Spall, seconded by Mrs. Bresja, that the school board of the city of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by section two point two dash three seven one-one, part A, paragraph two of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended for the following purposes. Two point two dash three seven one-one, part A, paragraph two, discussion of student matter, STUE twenty-three twenty-four dash forty, and two point two dash three seven one-one, part A, paragraph one of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended for the following purposes, discussion of personnel matter, P E R S twenty-three twenty-four dash zero five zero, zero five. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six-zero. We will go into closed session. Thank you all for-